The record?
All right. Good morning. It is October 1st, 2020. It's 9:03 in the morning. Board of Ada County Commissioners sitting for our open business meeting. We have two of our, all three commissioners with us. Commissioner Kenyon and LaCiano are on the line. We have got in our room, in the room.
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho, Bus Crisco operations.
All right. And then on the bridge, Steve Rutherford, Bob McQuade, Richard Beck, Sean Rain, Phil McGrane. Oh, Phil's got the big background. Beth Mon, our treasurer. And so we will get started. Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. So we will get started with our volunteer board appointments. We've got some renewals. And unless there is any discussion, we will go right to a motion.
Yes, Chair Malloy. I move to approve the three volunteer board appointments as listed on the agenda, with the terms of expiration as specified. Second?
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Oh, Commissioner Kenyon, are you an aye?
Aye.
Aye. But the chair states aye. All right. So our new business. We have two proclamation, excuse me, yes, two proclamations. One for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and one for 4H. And Commissioner Kenyon, if you would do the Domestic Violence Awareness Month for us?
Absolutely. The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread, impacts every person in this community, and does not discriminate based on socioeconomic status, gender, or age. And whereas, an estimated 1 in 4 lives in the 1710 will be victims of domestic violence at some point in his or her lifetime. Whereas, in 2019, there were 5,289 calls per service related to domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse in Ada County. And whereas, a range of services and programs exist throughout the Treasure Valley, providing safety, healing, and freedom from domestic abuse and sexual assault, including forensic exams, medical care, secure shelters, court advocacy, counseling, childcare, as well as case management. And whereas, the Board of Ada County Commissioners are important partners with the WCA, that's the Women in Children's Alliance, and Faces of Hope, to provide a safety net of crisis services, and create a community where individuals thrive and see healthy relationships. Now therefore, we, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, in recognition of this event, do hereby join national and local officials in proclaiming October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage support throughout our community for citizens to observe this month by wearing the color purple, to spark conversations surrounding domestic violence, and to mourn those whose lives were taken by domestic violence, to celebrate the tremendous progress victim advocates have made over the years, and to connect with one another with a true sense of unity to end domestic violence. So in witness thereof, on this first day of October 2020, and I just would like to shout out to Jean Fisher over at Faces, and Jan Betts, and I know Jan is also on the board, has been part of the Women and Children's Alliance as our own Sheriff Bartlett. So all those folks who volunteer and dedicate their lives to this cause, just want to show our gratitude from the board.
Absolutely. And I read that a little more carefully before coming in this morning. I would have had a purple shirt on, but I will have to remedy that later, later this month. And then we are just, and actually, the second one is designating just the week to 4H. And so Commissioner LaCiano, being our animal wrangler, if you would take that one for us?
Okay, gladly. The Board of County Commissioners, the State of Idaho, Ada County, to designate the week October 4th through 10th, 2020, as National 4H Week. Whereas, 4H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost 6 million youth across the country thus far. And whereas, 4H has helped 2,361 youth in Ada County, Idaho, to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. Whereas, 4H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provide experiences where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas, National 4H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4H offers young people, and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Ada County, Idaho, who work each day to make positive impact on those around them. And whereas, 4H's network of 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as National 4H Week in Ada County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. In witness whereof, on this, the first day of October 2020.
All right. And not unprecedented this year, we had to do a pretty much 4H-only fair at Expo. So that was a unique thing, but fortunately, we at least got that in. All right.
And major kudos to Bob and his team for really pulling off a really excellent ag show and sale. I know a lot of families appreciated it. They even had some extra room to spread out, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do that part.
Very good.
Chair, I just want to give a shout out also to Andrew Bingham and Alan Taggart at our U of I extension, who do a lot of outreach in our community with youth. And Alan has really stepped up and participates on the fair board on a regular basis. And his, his efforts and, and suggestion and enthusiasm has been really well received by all the board members, and we really appreciate that partnership and all the extra effort this year that is put into forming partnership, and that includes you, Bob.
Absolutely. I think it's important kids learn that animals are not born on those little foam trays they see in the grocery store. So. All right. We will move on to operations, and it looks like we have two change orders.
Chair, we need to make a motion on both the proclamations.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, if we could have our motion on our proclamations.
I'll, I'll start. So I'll start with, I move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda, and designate the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And now our 4H.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda, and designate the week of October 4th through 7th, 2020, as National 4H Week. I'll second that.
All, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Chair's aye. All ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Now we will move on to operations and our change orders. Have any discussion on those? It looks like we're.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Yes.
Two deductive change orders for the Ada County Courthouse IT roof replacement project, and one deductive change order for the UPS and transformer replacement project. These deductions are due to contingency items thankfully not needed during the project.
Very good. Always nice when the price comes in lower than we were told originally.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, if there is no further discussion amongst the board, I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the two change orders as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. And licenses. We have several licenses on here, and we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner LaCiano, do you want to make that motion?
Sure. And just real briefly, I think it was a week or maybe even two ago that we had both Heather Luther and Craig Jarrell from the Sheriff's Office come and just share that they are continuing to work and consult with Central District Health and all of these events as they, these licenses come in front of us. So with that, I will move to ratify and approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including five catering permits and one license renewal, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Court's office. I see Phil with the giant mural behind him.
Good morning, Commissioner. I actually have something this morning. I'm going to start with the wonkiest thing I ever bring, you know, that I can think of. As you recall, on Monday morning, we set the levy for the entire county. We were working with the tax commissioner for levies this week, a meeting. One thing we ran into though, there was a clerical issue that we needed to correct, and so Commissioner Kenyon, I'll need to contribute another signature specific to Ada County tax program, and to break apart the number.
Phil, I'm going to, I'm going to pause, I'm going to pause you for a minute. You're breaking up. I just want to make sure if everyone on bridge is not speaking, that they're muted. That could be part of the problem. And then Phil, I don't know if you're on your cell phone or what you're on, but you were breaking up a little bit, but I heard that you need to go to Commissioner Kenyon specifically for a signature related to Ada County, so I'll queue you back up there.
Okay. Can you hear me any better?
Yes.
Okay. I made an adjustment, so hopefully this will help. So on Monday, we submitted the levy, and so there was one clerical issue with the levies that we'll need to adjust. And this, remember, I pointed out Brad Vanderpool focuses on the decimal point and all those numbers that you saw. Due to a rounding error, or not an error, to the decimal point.
You're, you're, you're starting to break up again. I got that it's a rounding error to the whatever decimal point.
If I stop my video.
Chair?
Yes.
Just for everyone's edification, Brad Vanderpool was up here this morning and went through that with me and with Judy, and it's been taken care of.
Right. Okay. It, it's been resolved. It's a, again, a clerical or a rounding error, basically. And go ahead, Phil.
Hopefully stopping my video will help. I don't know what's going on.
It, it actually is your audio kind of going in and out. I don't know if it's, if your cell, if it's cell coverage in the building or what it is.
I don't know what it is. Sorry.
That's okay. You're, you're.
The good news is we've taken care of it with Commissioner Kenyon. It, it's a, the billionth decimal point was one digit off. It's that wonky.
Okay.
Most importantly, this morning, you have the designation of polling places. This really kicks off election. We mailed out 115,000 ballots, and are mailing another 5,000 ballots. So the election is underway. We are going to designate 134 polling. Polling locations. And use for 150 for this upcoming election. We were able to identify so many polling. We would not have been able to, obviously, since Boise School. Mr. Chairman, you should, for your, both the polling places, and a motion.
Yes, yes. And I, and I did catch that 134 polling places, I believe, is what you said. Just so you know, your technical thing, it's like you're going between a modern cellphone and a 1920's telephone or something. It's, I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on with your connection, but.
I don't know either.
If, is there anything else from the clerk's office before we entertain our motion to designate the polling places?
From the sounds of it, even if there is, I'm not going to be able to communicate it to you, so go ahead and.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm ready to make that motion, and I just want to give Phil and his team a lot of credit and kudos. I know really the rest of the state even kind of looks to you for advice and guidance, especially during this challenging time. And, you know, while voting has become, you know, more of a hot button issue than it should have, should be, I have really great faith and confidence in the work of you and your team, and we just really want to thank them all for everything they're doing. So with that, pursuant to Idaho Code 34-302, I move to designate the polling places as presented by the clerk.
I'll second that. And before we vote on it, Phil, I don't know if you caught the news on Channel 7 last night, but it had your face with this big smile covering the entire screen, and people were like, how can he always be so happy? In light of what's going on. It was pretty hilarious. You would have loved it if you, if you caught it. I hope you did. So I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And it's either happiness or Phil's losing his mind entirely. We're not sure. We'll find out later. Okay. And so we will move on from the clerk's office to our claims journal.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated September 30th, 2020. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Personnel action forms. We have several personnel action forms. And unless there is any discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including 10 leaves with pay and 153 salary increases, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And just for the public's awareness, if they're curious, a good number of this is merit increases based on, even though the budget was left without the 3% increase, there was room for merit increases from department heads. So with that, we will move to our assessor's office and get our report from Bob.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have several things I want to bring to your attention this morning. Just an update on reappraisal. We were going to have this wrapped up before the end of the year. Based upon our plan, we should be about 22% of the way through the reappraisal, but in actuality, we're 40% of the way through the appraisal, so we're really a good position on that. Also, we've been working the last couple of weeks on a dashboard. I'm really excited about it. We had someone come over and take a look at it yesterday, and he had some, some nice comments. That dashboard right now, it's, it really is kind of focused more on people, such as taxing districts, people who rely on, on our information for making their budgetary decisions. And we're going to change, we're going to add more information to that to the public, but information that's out there available right now, it's, we have 44 counts, history of assessed values, levy history, reconstruction value. Again, it's just, right now, it's geared towards people who are setting budgets in public agencies setting budgets, and we're going to, to add to that. Something that's just, we're scheduled in the next couple of weeks, is we're going to get some members of the press to come in and take a look at it and see what they feel would be helpful from their standpoint and their readers' standpoint. The, we're just about one and a half weeks from going live with motor vehicles. That's certainly going to be a challenge for all of us. We know that wait times are going to, to be increasing. We don't like that, but we just, there's, we're going to have to work our way through that. Hopefully, it won't be anything like what happened with driver's license. Talking about motor vehicles, interesting year, you know, motor vehicles entirely fee supported. As, back into December of 19, we started running a deficit for that, the budget fiscal year, and we had run a deficit. It just kept increasing up through June, the deficit, and we were becoming very concerned that we would not be able to generate revenue to, to clear that hurdle. And as September came in very strong, or hardest days of September, we're very sure that we're actually getting clearer, and we're certainly going to break even and make a little money, but nothing like what we've had in the past. We've run, not surpluses, but earnings of $100,000, $150,000 or so. Of course, it was a little scary, be running a deficit. We worked very closely with Iron Graves in the clerk's office, really starting in June or July, seeking her help, and we were working on projections. But that worked out really well. I just want to end my remarks with a lot of tax cancellations coming up on the next item, and most of those are just clean up. They're small rental parcels. They have a value of maybe $2,000 or $800. The taxable taxes on that run anywhere from just $1 to maybe less than $50. So that's the reason for a large number of tax cancellations, and we've worked with the Treasurer's Office on that. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, those are my comments from the assessor's office for this week.
All right. Any other questions for Bob before we take our motion?
Bob, Bob, I did a renter town hall last night, and I had a question come up that I couldn't answer, but just, I'll bring it up with you today, and then I'll, I'll follow up with you. You know, we're all aware how popular this area is with all, all kinds of folks moving here, and I think a lot of investors. And so one of the, the questions that came up was whether there was a way to understand local ownership versus out-of-state ownership. And I'll follow up with you on that. It would be sort of interesting if we could pull some kind of trend line. Assuming that's something you can do, but we'll, I'll check back in with you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner LaCiano, let me check into that and see if we can find out. That's an interesting question, and we'll see what we've got in. I'll give you a call later today and brief you on that.
It could, it could probably be assumed simply by the mailing address, I would think, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that they're not a part-time or, you know, they may still have their mail sent out of state for part of the year or something, so. All right.
We'll see what we can come up with.
If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion on the tax cancellations.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2013, two tax cancellations for 2014, seven tax cancellations for 2015, nine tax cancellations for 2016, nine tax cancellations for 2017, 11 tax cancellations for 2018, 12 tax cancellations for 2019, 17 tax cancellations for 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. I thought you were about to say a partridge in a pear tree at the end of that. Treasurer's Office, Beth, you're, you're, oh, there we go. Your icon is smiling. Let's see if you are smiling behind it.
Yes. Can you hear me? Good morning, Chair Malloy and Commissioners. On behalf of all of us in the Treasurer's Office, Happy Fiscal New Year.
Very good.
Had so many challenges, and our office was so excited yesterday to bring in the new year. I know you've worked hard to get us to this point and working on the FY21 budget, and here we are, FY21. In our office, it's heads down. Everyone is balancing, doing everything we can to wrap up last year's fiscal year. So that's a top priority. Another priority in our office is the cancellations you just approved. This is an important part of the work. There are several tasks that we do, including these tax cancellations, just to ensure that our data is accurate, that we don't unnecessarily mail a tax bill in November. So again, this is all part of our cleanup. So starting tomorrow, we will be processing these, these 68 cancellations you just approved, and all the additional steps preparation for our tax year. So.
All right.
That's it from our office.
Well, Happy Fiscal New Year to the Treasurer's Office. Any other, any questions for Beth?
Just thank you. You guys did a remarkable job in the face of a lot of challenges this year. So please send our thanks to your entire team.
Okay. Thank you. And they're wearing their glasses as well.
Okay. What do you, what do you toast, what do you toast the fiscal new year with?
We prepared a Treasurer's Resolution. So we did not toast this year, and instead, we just did a virtual resolution.
Okay. I figured champagne for the real new year. I didn't know what it was. It was root beer or something for the. All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Beth. Okay. Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I approve to, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Weed and pest. We have some lean, leans to release.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I move to approve one release of lean. The weed and pest is listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Expo Idaho, we have some events, and I assume that those events have the standard COVID clauses in place.
They do.
With everything. Okay. And.
Chair Malloy?
Yes.
Since Bob's there, would he mind just giving us a quick update on the upcoming events that are happening at the, at the Expo grounds over the next probably two weeks so we can be aware?
Sure. Commissioner Kenyon, I hope you can do that. We have a consignment sale going on in the center Expo, which is limited to 50 people. We also have flag football starting today and Friday. We also have the auto crossout in the west parking lot. We have a pig me goat show, and then next week, we jump into the dog show. All of these have been approved by CDH, and we'll continue to do our part to put proper signage, have hand sanitizers and mask signs up everywhere we go.
Great. Has there been any problem with folks getting the correct messaging about the COVID precautions that they are taking and they expect others to take?
They haven't had all this up to this point, so I think we're doing a pretty good job. We're trying to find events and make sure that we adhere to those guidelines as well, and that's what a couple of these events are. The Christmas Light Show, we've been trying to find something that would give us some business, and this is a perfect fit. It's a all-car, you drive through in an automobile, there's no, there's no touching or contact involved. And then the Thanksgiving basket, just a thing that we do every year to help out those families that need some, some assistance in the food area.
I just want to make sure that the message went out to all of these folks that they needed to add that language to any marketing, any, any messaging that they're putting out there.
Yes, we have been doing that. The dog show's not even going to put any messaging or advertising out. They don't want anybody to come down there, other than their participants.
Okay. Bob, for, for the Thanksgiving basket, is that something in coordination with the food banks or something, or somebody wanted to contribute to that? How could they do that?
They need to talk through, go through St. Vincent de Paul. They're the ones that are the promoter for this event.
Okay. So St. Vincent de Paul would be taking donations of, of cash or food or whatever for that?
That's my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion on the Expo events.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I'll go ahead and move to approve the two interim, interim events. The agreement is listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Parks and Waterways, I don't think we have Scott. Do we have anyone, Sean, are you going to speak to Parks and Waterways events? I don't think so. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes.
No, I wouldn't be doing that, thank you.
No, that's right, you're not, it's not your area, sorry. I stuck you in the wrong box there. So I'm sure, again, having talked with Scott before, I know they're working closely with Central District Health in the same way, ensuring that these events are either outdoors or very spaced if they are inside and keeping with all the CDH guidelines and there are appropriate COVID clauses in all of these agreements. So with that, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Lachando, if you want to do that, for the Parks and Waterways events.
All right, I'm getting my cell phone organized here.
Okay.
Okay, and since we don't have Scott on, I definitely want to move to approve it, but I would, well, maybe we'll just follow up with him. I move to approve the One Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that, but with the caveat that we need to circle back with Scott to make sure that they're obeyed by all COVID guidelines and aware of that and see if he's talked to CDH.
Right. I was, I was in the last meeting and I know they've been keeping tabs, but we can confirm on this one event. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, agreements, we have a few. We have fifty-four agreements. A great number of these are renewal agreements, given that we're rounding the fiscal year and contracts coming up. So any, any ones in particular that we need any discussion on?
Not for me.
Don't think so. So with that, we will entertain a motion on our agreements.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fifty-four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, and with nothing else on here, we will be in recess and move right to EMS.
You're on the record?
Okay. Good morning. Board of Ada County Commissioners is sitting for our EMS open business meeting and it is October first, it's nine thirty-six in the morning. Both our fellow commissioners are with us. Steve Rutherford's online and Sean Ryan is online. And Sean, my apologies for putting you over at Parks and Rec there for a moment, but I'm sure you were probably looking forward to it for just a brief second. So we will get kicked off here and our first item is our claims journal for EMS.
Yes, Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty, regarding EMS expenses.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. All right. Good afternoon, morning Kathleen. Personnel action forums for EMS. Sean, is there anything we need to note? In particular about this?
Mr. Chair, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel action forums as listed on the agenda, including one leave of pay and that December sheet remaining on file in the commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, approval of minutes?
Yes, Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair, or acting chair as appropriate, to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. And agreements, looks like we have one agreement for EMS.
Mr. Chair and Sean, I make the motion on this. I'm trying to recall, I believe KUNA had tried to pass a fire levy that didn't go through. So before we, you know, approve this, which I'm ready to do, I just would love for you to kind of explain to the board what's going on out there and how that might impact us.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lachando, you know, KUNa Fire has tried a couple, at least a couple of times to pass a levy out there. They are still providing ambulance service from KUNA and basically we're kind of the second in. We also provide a battalion chief on any response that would require a supervisor, like an extrication accident, that type of thing, code blue also. But at this point in time, the board for KUNA is still maintaining that they're going to keep their ambulance service out there. And so there has been some talk about them stopping ambulance service, but at this point, they have chosen to not do that. And so if they do choose to stop doing, providing ambulance service out there, we would need to start responding in KUNA and be ready to position an ambulance out in that area, whether at their station or somewhere in the vicinity. So this agreement really is a mutual aid agreement with KUNa Fire for that provision of service, even though it is our district.
So just, you know, as we think about this and think about, you know, generally how people feel about property taxes, it's just ever more important to have you looped into those conversations about how we're growing in that area. And that was really critical to pausing at least a development that I thought was going to be really difficult for us to service.
And if I'm not mistaken?
Okay, so with that.
I was just going to say, if I'm not mistaken, Sean, I mean, not, not that I want to put, you know, Ada County paramedics and EMS in conflict with private business, but I mean, private, private services could go out that area and provide that service if they wanted to, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, it depends on their level of licensure with the state. So if they're, if a private service is only licensed to provide transfer service, then they can't do nine-one-one.
Okay.
But, you know, all the folks out there in KUNA that live in Ada County are paying taxes into the Ada County Ambulance Taxing District. And probably fifteen years ago, KUNa Fire did not have paramedics. And so we responded out there on every call for service. Once they brought on paramedics, that's about the time that we stopped responding and it was on their request back in, I think it was two thousand and six is when that occurred.
Okay, so it's not simply the transport issue, it's the medical assistance and other things that happen around those calls as well. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Go ahead, Commissioner.
And it's really for me an equity, equity issue. If you're paying the same rate of taxes as others, you should get.
Absolutely.
Similar rate of service.
No, absolutely.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. General discussion. Sean, anything you need to update the board on or?
Mr. Chair, just a few things, as it relates to KUNA and Commissioner Lachando's question. You know, we have looked at some ground off of KUNA Meridian Road, you know, sort of in that Columbia area so that we could service both KUNA and kind of the South Meridian area. But I've also been in talks with Chief Niemeyer with Meridian Fire as they place their South Meridian stations out there that might be an ideal location for us to, to put a unit. So just a few other details on that. Any questions about KUNA before I move on?
I don't, but Chair Malloy, I have a question for Sean.
Sure.
Have we heard anything back from the consulting firm that was doing the assessment?
As far as I know, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we have not heard that from, I believe that's the North Ada County Center to Cover survey. I don't believe that report has been finalized yet. I spoke with Chief Gervais at Boise Fire. It's been a couple of weeks ago and they were just waiting for that report to be released, so.
Let me get that, let's circle the wagons and all of us kind of go through it and chat about it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, sort of along those same lines, would we, I know you all are working with Development Services on sharing information about what would be the triggers for you to need new station personnel, et cetera. I'd really like to have us sit down and go through that so we can understand it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we, I actually had John Blake and I had a meeting with Compass yesterday to start sharing some of that. They're going to be sending me an email so that I can get them the data that they need to start that assessment. So I'm really looking forward to that, that's pretty exciting.
Very good.
So, Mr. Chair, beyond that, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have Ryan LaRondo is actually, I didn't know he was such a crafty guy, but he has made one of these for each of our employees so that they can wear them on their uniforms for the month of October. We're also placing these magnets on our ambulances, which is pretty awesome. And then Monday, Ryan and I will be participating in a press event with Women's and Children's Alliance. So we've done that on an annual basis for many years now. And then Ryan is also working with Jean Fisher and Faces and along with Elizabeth Duncan to do some kind of press release about our work that we're doing with Faces too. So pretty, pretty good stuff with, with them. An update on the Percy issue, we had a meeting with the deputy director and quality assurance manager from Percy, and I believe that we have reached a resolution. It basically comes down to how the law is written and our job descriptions need to really match what the law has as far as primary job function. So I think that we have, have come to a resolution to keep our positions that have been rule of eighty as rule of eighty moving forward. I'm kind of the test case for the state of Idaho. I learned, which that was, that was super great to be the test case, but.
You didn't want to use the word guinea pig?
Well, I'm tired of what I've been.
So, I'm really glad you guys have been able to work this out, that's fantastic. But also, you know, the email from the director about to me indicated that he was, that kind of like shake on us that we hadn't known about this. But again, to my point, even the only own state director of EMS didn't know of this. So we don't, we weren't missing anything in some way, that's all, that's all I can tell.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yeah, it's interesting, I asked him for the list of, at least who they contacted at Ada County, and for some reason, they actually had Kathleen Graves listed as the director for EMS. So I'm sure when Kathleen saw that, she was like, I don't even know what to do with this. So congratulations, Kathleen.
Yeah, no, I know, I was so offended. I don't remember receiving anything.
Yeah, it's, you know, it was just a strange thing, so. But, you know, in speaking with Bureau Chief Wayne Denny, he hadn't been, nobody had reached out to him. He was aware of the legislation, but the language for our portion of it, there was no change. And so the way they explained it is prior to the last year, when the legislation changed, it was on the employer to certify who was and was not rule of eighty. And now that has changed to Percy determines that based on the law. And so basically, we just have to make sure that our job descriptions fit what the law says. And then, you know, I think moving forward, I think it would be advantageous to clean up that legislation for EMS to make it more specific. But we'll just have to walk through that and decide when the best time is to do that.
Yeah, I know, you know, like I said, I, you know, it's not fair when you're switching, switching the rules in the middle of the game for people. All right.
Well, importantly, you've got a position you need to hire into, so you think we're going to be able to resolve this quickly to make that happen? Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lachando, yeah, I, I think, you know, we did the work and rebuilt the job description for both my position and the deputy chief. Along with that, you'll probably notice that we've been calling positions chief and battalion chief for years, even though at HR they were still called field supervisor or deputy director. While we're doing this, while we're changing job descriptions, we're just going to go ahead and make that move. And so my position would become EMS chief paramedic and then deputy chief paramedic, battalion chief paramedic, that kind of thing, if that makes sense.
Yep. Yes, Sean, you said, Chair Malloy, Sean, you'd stated that we might need to run legislation this year would be appropriate, are you thinking?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, according to, well, it's interesting because the director drum indicated in an email with Commissioner Lachando that we could do that. The deputy director felt like this year may not be the year to try to do that because they just changed the legislation. And I guess it was made pretty clear to Percy that legislators want control over who is and isn't rule of eighty or ninety. So, you know, I guess we can explore it for this year. To me, it seems like a no-brainer, but he had different thoughts, so.
Okay, we'll discuss that with our lobbyists.
All right, any other discussions?
Beyond that, we were down to, we have three people out on quarantine right now. All of those related to off-duty exposure. Most of them were family exposures, so not attending a big event or anything, but where a person in their family became ill. We are, have our Idaho Health Data Exchange, we are sending data to them now, which they're super happy about. And we're starting to talk about and work on the bidirectional flow of data so that we're getting data back to our folks without having to log into their portal to get it. And with that, that's kind of the last thing that I had, was anybody has questions?
Okay, any other questions, Sean?
Thanks, Sean.
All right, thank you very much. Love the domestic violence ribbons and stuff, that's a great way to spark up a discussion on the topic, so. All right, with that, we will be at recess. All right, good morning. It is October first, twenty twenty. Board of Ada County Commissioners sitting as the Evamore Community Infrastructure District Number One. It is nine fifty-two and we've got Kathleen Graves joining us in the room. Both our commissioners online, along with Steve Rutherford. And we will get this kicked off. I need to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, ayes have it, motion carries. Agreement number one, three-nine-four-eight. Do we need any, any discussion on this?
I think this was the one, I think this was the one that Kathleen was going to come back to the board and we were asking for what the average cost is for temporary staffing.
Oh, okay.
Per year.
So that's why Kathleen has joined us. Kathleen, go ahead. I figured you were in here for summer, I think.
That was only a fast. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, Lachando, so yes, this agreement is for services for managing the district, which we have Dave Logan managing the district. So any of the construction projects that are going on, he's the one that's going out there making sure that those are going smoothly and working with Evamore and the developer. Last year was. Last year was an anomaly where we didn't have a lot of new projects. So I went back and looked at eighteen and nineteen. Those were the big years when we had some big projects. And in 2018, we paid for services for about $27,000, and then in nineteen, it was about $22,000. And again, those are things that are covered with the developer contribution, so not necessarily property taxes in the past. We have a small admin fee that we're now getting from the district to cover admin fees, but it's like $3,000. It covers just, you know, barely enough. But anything else, the district, the developer contributes. And so he's the one that's been contributing up until, I think, last year to pay for those services and continues to do so.
Okay, so he continues to also provide the support for this year's?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions on that? If not, then we will entertain a motion for that agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, new business and approval of minutes.
Yes, Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Any other discussion related to Avamore? Hearing none, we will go into recess.
Thank you, thanks Kathleen.
Thank you.